The excitement of summer is felt. There's good energy in the room. We'll have this, our 15-second warning.
Thank you. Welcome to our Gilbert Town Council, June 26, 2014, Town Council meeting. Councilmember Ben Cooper will introduce the individual to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll invite all those in council chambers to please arise.
Mayor, tonight we have a treat. John McHadden, the Director of Outreach from Congressman Sammons' office, will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. As stated on the agenda, the invocation may be offered by a person of any religion, faith, belief, or non-belief, as well as council members. A list of volunteers is maintained by the town clerk. An interested person should contact the clerk for further information. Tonight, we have the pleasure of having Pastor Hector Oriana here, from the Desert Gateway Baptist Church. Pastor Hector, please.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you so much for this opportunity to come here to this town meeting, Lord. We thank you for the freedom that you've given us in this land, Lord. Lord, we just pray that you just continue to be with our leaders, our government, Father, be with those servicemen that are in other countries, Lord, protecting us and fighting for our freedoms. Lord, be with the police officers, all our firefighters here, Lord, that provide us safety here in this town. Lord, be with these town council members, be with our mayor, Lord. I pray that you just give them the wisdom as they make decisions for us, Father. And we just pray that you just guide this meeting throughout the rest of the night. Lord, we thank you, we love you, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Our deputy clerk will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Cooper.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. Presentations and proclamations. Item number one. Councilmember Daniels.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I wasn't quite ready yet. It's my pleasure to introduce the agenda, item number one, which is a proclamation we'd like to present to the following organizations: Operation Welcome Home, Gilbert Leadership, Friends of the Library, For Our City, Positively Gilbert, and also the Town of Gilbert. And if you have been asked to be a representative to accept this proclamation, if you'd come forward now, we'd appreciate it. And also Elizabeth from our Human Relations Commission. There's a good-looking family. This is a neat proclamation. "We are here to recognize the efforts of all of these wonderful groups and the efforts that they provide within the Town of Gilbert." And the proclamation reads as follows: "Whereas the Town of Gilbert Human Relations Commission wishes to recognize and promote positive news, events, and actions in the community; and whereas the Town of Gilbert Human Relations Commission is committed to fostering a community of excellence that recognizes the rights, achievements, and accomplishments of all individuals; and whereas the Town of Gilbert Human Relations Commission is committed to enhancing quality of life and serving with integrity, trust, and respect; and whereas together we can make a difference by creating a positive impact within our community; and whereas various groups have focused on promoting the public awareness of the positive events within our community for the benefit of all citizens who reside in Gilbert; and whereas all citizens of Gilbert understand that they have the ability to live life with the courage to cause positive change and the commitment to make a positive difference in the lives they touch." Now therefore, on behalf of John W. Lewis, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, we recognize and support people, organizations, and programs that are committed to promoting positive thought and actions and encourage all citizens to join our efforts. So on behalf of the mayor, we'd like to present a copy of this proclamation to each of the organizations, and just with that vote of thanks for all that you do, the time, the hours. Gilbert is a better place because of your efforts, so thank you. I'll pass the mic to Mayor.
I wanted to thank you. May be seated, with the exception of one. Our Human Relations Commission organized the efforts for tonight, and we just wanted to introduce one member and thank you for being here. Can you tell this group who you are?
I am Elizabeth Harper, current Commissioner for the Gilbert Town Commission.
Thank you. Thank you for being here and organizing this, and we appreciate you. Thanks, Elizabeth.
We invite Ron Coleman to come forward as he's walking up. A brief introduction of Ron. He is the new Chair of the Parks and Rec, the Parks Board. He has been on it for multiple years now, does a tremendous job, gives a significant amount of time and energy towards it. And with that, and I'll pass the microphone to him in just a minute, I'm going to read a proclamation from the mayor. And I'll just read a part of it here. It says, "Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of the community throughout this country, including the Town of Gilbert; and whereas our parks and recreations are vitally important to establish and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic, environmental well-being of the community and region; and now therefore, John W. Lewis, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, does hereby proclaim, July 2014, and recognize it as Parks and Recreation Month in Gilbert, Arizona." This is typical of Ron, doesn't want to say much, rather just go get to work. So we appreciate all that he does.
Well, I'm very lucky to be the council liaison to the Gilbert Sister Cities program. And so I'd like to invite all that are associated with Gilbert Sister Cities to come forth tonight. Summertime is a fun time when the program cranks up. Greg Kilke is the president here, and I'm going to let him introduce some special guests that we have, and talk a little bit about the program. Greg?
Thank you, council, mayor. Pleased to be here again. We came a few months ago to give our annual report. We're happy to be back. As you remember, a couple months ago, we had Mayor Fraser Agnew here for a special visit. Tonight, we have some students and part of our Youth Ambassador Program here, so I'm going to turn it over to our chair in a minute. I want to introduce, the person on my left is Gail Dish, Vice President of Gilbert Sister Cities, and Suzanne Lunt is co-chair this year of our Youth Ambassador Program. We've been in existence almost 20 years, I think next year will be 20 years. The youth exchange has been going on since 2000 in Newton Abbey, Northern Ireland, and our other sister city in LaShawn, China, started about, I think this is about the fourth year. Tonight, we just have the students from Newton Abbey because the students from China are arriving next week. So we had to fit it into the council schedule, so we're very pleased to be here. So turn it over to Suzanne Lunt.
All right, thank you. We're just thrilled to introduce our student ambassadors for 2014, and they're looking forward to an experience that's just a once-in-a-lifetime thing. So congratulations to all these outstanding students. First, we have Curtis Lunt, and he'll be going to LaShawn, China, and his counterpart, Yang, will be arriving next Wednesday. So, and then we have Emma Helbig, and she has her counterpart, Jamie McCluskey, from Newton Abbey, and we're so happy to have him. And then we have Kaitlin Cliffe, Catherine, I'm sorry, Catherine. And if you could just kind of raise your hand so we could see who you are, and she's hosting Kaitlin Hunter from Newton Abbey, and they've just been here just a little more than a day now, so they're just getting acclimated to our heat, I think. And then we have Peyton Mahoney, and her guest from LaShawn, China, Jessica, will be arriving next Wednesday, so we're really looking forward to getting to know these great kids. I thought I'd just take a minute and ask our Newton Abbey students a quick question, mostly because you love to hear the accents, and it's so cute. So, okay, Jamie, I'm going to ask you, what are you looking forward to the most while you're here in Arizona?
We're going up to the Grand Canyon. When are we going to the Grand Canyon? Soon. I'm sure it's soon. We're going up to the Grand Canyon, which I think is pretty good, see, big hole. So, it should be very interesting.
Well, everybody has to see the Grand Canyon while they're here, that's for sure. And Kaitlin, what are you looking forward to sharing from your home with Catherine once you get there?
Probably going up to the North Coast to see the Janskaus Way and the beaches and stuff.
I know everybody's really excited about their experiences, so let's hear it for our 2014 Student Ambassador.
Sleeping on the job, I'm in trouble. Thank you for coming up, Maria. It is our distinct pleasure to recognize Maria Suniga Kadavid for her many years of excellent service in the Town of Gilbert. And before I read, I was thinking maybe we didn't read the whole proclamation, but there's some beautiful things in here I do want to just touch on real quick. But before we do that, are there any thoughts that you want to offer us? You know, I was, I don't know, on the spot here, but anything you'd like to share with us?
Well, I have learned so much from the town. I grew up with the town. I'm still young, as you can see. But to this council, to Ben Cooper, say hello to your dad, Ben. I really admire him for what he did for the town and for the council. Maintain and be aware of sustainable efforts the town has done. Liveable community has so many features and characteristics that mean good business, and that's what made the town recognize, in Arizona and in the whole country. We need to maintain those, and we need to, that makes good business, okay? That's all. I love the town. I am proud of being working these many years. I was pretty busy doing different things. I really enjoyed it, and I pay my dues as well.
Maria retires from the Development Services Planning Department, having earned the respect of her colleagues. She will be remembered for her insightful analysis of architectural design, astute work with the development community to facilitate the quality of Gilbert as we know today, and for being a strong advocate of sustainable development utilizing green design. As Maria brings to close her 27 years of distinguished service with the Town of Gilbert, we sincerely and enthusiastically thank her for her leadership and commitment to serving our community. Her dedication, advice, and wisdom have contributed to the betterment of the town and strengthened the Town of Gilbert Development Services Planning Department. With that, let's give her a great big round of applause.
And anyone else we need to have come up? Okay, to our town attorney, we go to Agenda Item 50, just for a moment, and then we come back, and we'll go through systematically. Turn around this direction and look, show those in council chambers and those watching, what is this right here, and describe it. And let's have you state your name too, and your position here at the Town of Gilbert, and then please describe this and tell us what happened last night.
My name is Jocelyn Marty. I'm the Recycling Administrator for the town. And last night, myself and a group of six other municipalities were recognized for fostering regional partnerships by the Maricopa Association of Governments, and that's what we did.
And so Gilbert, with this chief organizer, Jocelyn, received a very distinguished award in front of a lot of people, and this is what we received. We wanted to bring her back so the community could see it, and thank you for your efforts. Please join me in a big round of applause for Jocelyn. Oh, we better take a picture too. We also have some current events that I will describe quickly with the PowerPoint. This month, we thank many of you who have contributed, and there's just a few more days. And that's why I wanted to mention that Gilbert Feeding Families, the month of June, the goal to take our 72.6 square miles of Gilbert and come up with 72,600 mills. Now, Councilmember Daniels, I know councilmembers up here have also, tonight, setting the pace, and some have already put in their cans. Are there any cans that we needed to hold up right now?
I think they've all been deposited out there, so that's why that one's...
That's why the box is out there now. So, to our citizens in Gilbert, the next few days, if you happen to see a box that says Gilbert Feeding Families, we are still working on that goal, and we're getting very close. We invite you to contribute to be part of Gilbert Feeding Families. We shift to another wonderful opportunity in the month of July. Our Gilbert Fire and Rescue Team will do their annual back-to-school supply drive. A lot of details are found out on our website. We encourage you to find them and help some of our schoolchildren that will be the beneficiaries of that July activity. Councilmember Ray, what happened last Friday night, and why would we put the slide up there?
So we put the slide up there because there's some great pictures of the flugelhorn. Some of you who have frequent Bergy's Coffee on Gilbert Road, or just drove down Gilbert Road, would have seen this piece of art that had been there for about four weeks, I believe, as part of the Old Arts, Culture, and Tourism Board. They brought in this piece of art. They are, it left Friday night, or Saturday night, with a little ceremony, got to meet the artist as he talked about it, very interesting, and we look forward to the next piece of art that will come into the town as they find a suitable location for it. But another great, great job by the Arts, Culture, and Tourism Board as they continue to promote the arts here in Gilbert.
Thank you. Last slide. This is a special time of year. Wanted to make sure our citizens are aware. Sunday night is the Community Patriotic Music Program. Families, neighbors, friends, all invited, free of charge, at the Mission Community Church, 7:00 p.m. On July the 4th, there's an old-fashioned picnic swim party at the Perry Swim Pool from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. You're invited to that. And then the fireworks will take place at the Central Christian Church. Gathering begins at 6:00 p.m., fireworks scheduled to go off at 9:00. And then there are some neighboring spots to get a good look at the fireworks at the Camp Leverdy High School, grass area, and also at the youth soccer field. So happy birthday, America. We invite all to join in the celebration. Thank you. We move to communication from citizens. We have two. As noted on the agenda, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Vice Mayor Cook, we have two requests, and I will let you lead at this point.
Well, thank you, Mayor. We'd like to welcome to the podium Joyce Zemel.
Joyce, as you come to the podium, for the record, you're asked to state your name if you're a Gilbert resident, and then you will be given up to three minutes to share your comments.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Joyce Zemel. I'm not a resident of Gilbert, but I'm in the Gilbert School District. So in that sense, yes, I live in that part of Mesa that is part of the school district. And I'm not here to, I'm just here to praise. I'm not here, I'm here to praise you, not to knock you down. Mayor Lewis and members of the council, I've already introduced myself, and basically I just want to thank you on behalf of the almost 4,000 followers of the Save Our Dedicated GPS Employees Group for your proclamation that recognizes the efforts of groups like ours for trying to keep positive about our employees, the teachers, the programs they put on, and we just feel good about the fact that we are part of that positive flow of information that's in the district.
Thank you.
Just a thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor, we'd like to welcome Joe Guzek to the podium.
And for the record, my name is Joe Guzek, and I'm a Gilbert resident. Mayor Lewis, Town Council. I would like to personally thank all of you for supporting last year in late November and in December the Education First School Tax Credit Awareness Month. To let you know and kind of give you some numbers of the impact that you did by spreading the word, many of the schools were behind, behind by a lot. With your awareness and your promotion of all of you, and everybody's dedication to it, the schools actually came out approximately about $300,000 more. That is a tremendous thing to help the children. That is a dollar-for-dollar tax credit. I encourage anybody in this room to consider always giving to the schools. This is an opportunity, if you have burden, a state tax burden that you owe, you can actually direct up to $200 per person, $400 per family, and it is a great way for, on the district and the charter side, that is for extracurricular activities. Those are things like after-school programs which help the kids catch up, maybe, and they're deficient in reading, or they might be in a chess class, or they might be in a debate class, or they might be in a science club, or they might do with band, or music, and all of those great things. So with that, the second part of that is for the private schools. Those private schools, you can actually give money to up to $1,000 for those children, and that's for tuition, so that children, those children can choose to go to a private school of their choice. In the Town of Gilbert, we have three school districts, which include East Mesa. We have close to 20 charter schools and three private schools. As you know, I am your, let's put it this way, I'm your lovable, slightly annoying, mythical, education, American citizen, and I will always keep coming to you and challenging you. And since we have a little bit of more of a head start, I'm going to say to you, I want to welcome you to take a new challenge. This one's going to be called the Five, Five, Five Challenge. And I'm not just coming to you, I'm going to all of my elected officials, and to all my school boards, and to all the principals of all the different schools. And what I'm asking you to do is in the months of August, September, October, November, to reach out to five people, the same five people, and keep repeating the message over and over and again. And at the end, I want you to encourage them to spread the word and do it to five more. As all of you sit in this chamber tonight, I encourage you to do the same. This is a great way to help our children. This is a great way to make sure that our children get a complete education. It's not just what happens in the classroom, it is the complete experience, and this is a way that you've been provided by your state legislators that you can help. And I would greatly appreciate if you would, as I will start to send you emails on August 1st, and to all the state representatives, and to all the federal, as well as all the board members and all the principals. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cook, just to confirm, no other individuals wish to speak?
Just the two.
Thank you. We move to the consent calendar. As noted on the agenda, the items listed on the consent calendar may be approved by a single motion unless removed at the request of council for further discussion or action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. Just to confirm, from the study session, Agenda Item Number 12 was polled. Were there any other items on the consent calendar list that were polled that I missed? So just 12? Just 12, okay. Vice Mayor Cook has talked to members of the council, and you've identified five agenda items to poll for some discussion, and those are Agenda Items 7, 8, 11, 18, and 28.
That's correct.
Any, did we miss any? So to Vice Mayor Cook, for the other consent calendar items, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I would like to move that we approve Agenda Items 9, 10, 13 through 17, 19 through 27, 29 through 32, 34 through 36, and Agenda Item Number 44. I will turn it over to Councilmember Daniels.
Thank you. We would like to consider the appointment to the Planning Commission of one alternate member to fill the remainder of the term ending June 1st, 2015, and that would be Brent Moody.
Second.
Yes, with that motion second, please vote. Let's approve of the seven of all. Thank you. Agenda Item Number 7.
And Councilmember Peterson would like to...
Please, Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, I don't have a whole lot to say on this one. Same conversations we had before. I just want to pull it so we could vote on it separately, Mayor.
Mayor, I move that we approve Item 7.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion second, please vote. Let's approve of the five to vote. Thank you. On Agenda Item Number 8, we had discussions on this topic at a prior council meeting. And Rod, if you could, for those who are in council chambers, give a brief overview as to the topic, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mayor Lewis. Members of the council, Rod Buchanan, Parks and Recreation Director. This item is a proposal to change the urban, the community fishing program in the town of Gilbert. And over the last, since we met with you last, I've met with a number of stakeholders and interested parties, and I want to thank them publicly for giving me their best opinions and advice in order to come up with, we believe, tonight is a viable solution and option for you to consider. Basically, it takes, I do have a formal presentation if you want to see it, but basically, this proposal changes the fishing, all that takes place in Water Ranch today to four, three other locations, so for a total of four. It does allow for catch and release of bass and sunfish only at Water Ranch, and the other three lakes are normal urban community fishing programs. It also allows for bait to be used, but a single barbless hook. And it does seem like something that the Arizona Game and Fish Department is willing to support and take forward their staff members to their commission, and believe that it has a high likelihood of success. It's a good start, and I believe that we, through increased enforcement activities and other enhancements that we're going to do out there, that we'll be able to monitor and come back to you next year with a report on how we did and what we should do next.
Thank you. To the council, there are 11 who have submitted comments. All 11 have marked on this Agenda Item that they are in favor. Nine have asked to speak. We did have a council meeting where we had about 50 minutes of time dedicated, and one option might be, and this is not to rush it, not to cause someone not to have adequate time, but if we gave a minute to the nine, would you be okay with that? Okay. So Vice Mayor Cook, if you could, lead the next few minutes, the next nine minutes, and call up individuals, let them know who's on deck and so forth, and we'll turn to you.
Thank you, Mayor. We'd like to welcome Christopher Huber to the podium, and Tom Russell on deck.
And as you saw in the communication from citizens, if you could state your name and if you're a Gilbert resident for the record, and then, I hope this doesn't rush you, but you'll be given a minute to speak.
Thank you. My name is Christopher Huber. I am a Phoenix resident, local high school teacher, and volunteer with the local chapter of Project Healing Waters, a recovery program for wounded United States military veterans. We work throughout the state, taking the veterans to multiple outings, as well as recovery programs through education, through fly fishing. In the local area, our outings have met with limited success as we look for water with reasonable numbers of fish present. To that effect, we often have to go to neighboring cities up in the mountains to find quality fisheries. We believe and would be very anxious to see a quality water program established in the Phoenix metro area so that we could engage in trips locally to further facilitate the recovery program for the veterans.
Thank you. A minute goes by really fast, doesn't it? But thank you, we wanted to hear that information, we appreciate it. Thank you.
We'd like to welcome Tom Russell to the podium, and Joe Stoller on deck.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. My name's Tom Russo. I live at 667 East Pony Lane in Gilbert. Just have a couple of short, quick points I'd like to make regarding this program. First off, and I told this to the council last time, I think this is an excellent opportunity to educate our youth on the conservation of fish and their environment. We need to stress to them that the single barbless hook is not just the fact that we're not catching fish, but it is protecting the environment. I don't want to get into that too much. But in addition, and I'm trying to make it real quick, in addition to that, if we can create this program within the lakes here in Gilbert, it will bring people from across the valley, thus benefiting the Gilbert businesses. Quick, quick.
Thank you.
We'd like to welcome Joe Stoller to the podium, and on deck will be Gentry Smith.
Hi, I'm Joe Stoller. I'm a Tempe resident. I'm president of the Desert Flycasters, which is a local, East Valley-based fly fishing club. And the reason we're here is we fully support this proposal, as noted, and we think it's going to be a good thing. It's going to help make Gilbert, especially the Water Ranch, a destination for fly fishermen. And I think what that means for the city is additional sales, gas, food, et cetera, as folks like us come here to fish. And I think we'd also like to offer something in return. I mean, we're known for educating the public for fly fishing and fishing in general, and one of the things we would like to offer is that we would help coach or teach fly fishing to Gilbert citizens, children, help in any kind of fishing-related event at these lakes. So that's a no strings attached offer that our club would like to offer to the city. So I'm going to try to do it in less than a minute, so, next.
Thank you.
We'd like to welcome Gentry Smith to the podium, and on deck will be Michael Horvath.
My name is Gentry Smith, and I am a Chandler resident. I'm a, I'm the Education Chairman for Desert Flycasters, the Marketing Director for White Mountain Lakes Foundation, and the Arizona contributor to Southwest Fly Fishing Magazine. Today, I just have a couple of brief points to make on education. Education is the cornerstone of Desert Flycasters Angling Club. Every year, we host a series of free education events that are open to the public. We advertise these events in the Arizona Republic to increase our reach. The club provides the instructors, equipment, drinks, and snacks at no cost to the participants. Our members also serve as volunteer instructors for local nonprofit groups such as the Boy Scouts of America, where we help them earn their Fly Fishing Merit badges. We volunteer for Casting for Recovery, a nonprofit group that hosts fly fishing retreats for breast cancer survivors. And as Chris mentioned, we recently committed to hosting an outing for the Project Healing Waters Phoenix Chapter, a nonprofit group that takes veterans fly fishing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your service.
We'd like to welcome Michael Horvath to the podium, and on deck will be Scott Anderson.
Thank you. I'm Michael Horvath, Phoenix resident, and I would just like to praise and compliment the council for, in a time that we've gone through, we usually see as citizens opportunities taken away. And this is truly a new opportunity. It's a new, a new way to go about fishing. And I'd just like to share a very quick story, and the Reptarian area is very dear. I got the opportunity to fish out of a belly boat, which you float around the lake. I caught no fish, but I caught six monofilament fishing lines, of which one had a treble hook on and one had a dead fish on. So this is just a different view for this facility. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'd like to welcome Scott Anderson to the podium, and on deck will be Mike Evans.
Scott Anderson, Gilbert resident. What a better way to improve our image as a place for staycations than to create such a unique opportunity here. I think what the, what is proposed tonight is definitely a step in the right direction. My preference would be to see all the species be catch and release. We have many different species in the lake, and there may be some confusion on what can be released and what can be kept. That's the only thing I'm concerned about, but I think overall, we will do a lot of positive things for the health of the habitat by putting this kind of a program forward at the Water Ranch Lake, and I'm definitely supportive of it, Your Honor.
Thank you.
We'd like to welcome Mike Evans to the podium, and on deck will be Joe Miller.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I am Mike Evans. I am a Gilbert resident. This is my 20th summer here in Gilbert. I'm also the Conservation Director for Desert Rivers Audubon Society. We represent about 250 dues-paying members, have about 900 folks on our mailing list, all here in the Southeast Valley. All our board members are from Mesa, Gilbert, and Chandler. And we are supporting this compromise measure. You asked at the last meeting for a compromise. This is the compromise that has been struck, and I hope that you will all step forward and support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'd like to welcome Joe Miller to the podium, and on deck will be Lisa Limbert.
Good evening. I'm Joe Miller. I'm a resident of Paesland, Arizona, where it is thankfully a little bit cooler. I'm also a member of Desert Flycasters, and I have worked on a volunteer basis as a technical consultant with the Arizona Game and Fish Department. And I know that they have a great commitment to providing good public service and projects for the citizens throughout the state. And I believe that the proposed change in your park and recreation programs on the waters here in Gilbert will be of great value to Gilbert citizens, will open up educational opportunities for kids and other people, and I hope that you go further with this program. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for being here tonight.
We'd like to welcome Lisa Limbert to the podium.
Hello, I'm Lisa Limbert. I'm a Gilbert resident, and I am here representing East Valley Wildlife. We are the licensed wildlife rehabilitators that care for a lot of the injured animals that come out of the preserve. We are very supportive of this compromise. We think it shows a real commitment by the city towards the protection of wildlife.
Thank you.
And Mayor, we have two individuals that were in favor but did not want to speak, but I want to put their name into the record. Mike Stewart and Bill Bachelor were in favor of the Agenda Item.
Thank you. To our young fisherman, David Ferris, please. As you had a chance to speak, if you could state your name, whether you're a Gilbert resident, and then you've got one minute.
My name's David Ferris. Actually, I'm a Chandler resident, but I'm also a member of the Desert Flycasters, and I'm also an Arizona game and fish, fly fishing instructor. And I've been after this for 20 years, ever since they built the pond over there at Water Ranch. I walked through that place, and I have been advocating catch and release on that lake. I think you're just that close to being right on the money, and that is, if you can just do away with the bait, it would be perfect. But if we can't do away with the bait, then this is a step in the right direction, and I think we'll probably in the years to come, we'll finally get where we need to be. But it's a great resource, and we need to maximize it. It's a unique resource, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. To those who are here tonight, and many who have sent emails, and many who spoke at a prior council meeting, thank you. We've got some talented council members. I just don't recall if any of the seven of us are skilled fishermen or fisherwomen, and so we've relied on you, and it's been very helpful. And I think what was mentioned last time would be to have discussions that have occurred and try it. And if it needs to be modified, we'll do that. And so at this point, council members, are we ready to vote? I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I would like to move that we approve Agenda Item Number 8.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion second, please vote. Thank you, that's approved with the seven of them. Agenda Item Number 11.
That would be Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, before us tonight is an amendment to an existing development agreement we have with Rivellon. And as I've pondered this, to me, we're not looking at the original agreement so much as the amendment itself, and is the amendment an improvement to the agreement? I'm concerned this amendment increases the risk to the taxpayer. We're trading, in essence, we're trading sure dollars for speculative ones, which really strikes at the main strength of the original agreement. The guarantee originally was that the developer only enjoyed a percentage of the benefit that they brought to the table. And with this amendment, that guarantee is lost for 14.4 million of the total. So with that, Mayor, I don't think that this is an improvement to the agreement, at least from the perspective of the taxpayer and protecting their interests, and so I'm opposed to it, and just wanted to be able to pull it and voice my objections. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Taylor?
I think you make a good point, and so that's probably how my vote will go down on this.
Thank you. Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Lewis, I move that we approve Agenda Item 11 tonight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. That's approved with the five to vote. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I would like to just make one brief statement. I do believe that we're protecting the interests of the taxpayer on this vote, and that's why I voted in the affirmative for this Agenda Item. And the reasoning for that is because our population has spoken loud and clear that we do need employment corridors in this community, that we need a business base that will assist us to be sustainable for many years into the future, and for that reason, I believe that we are in fact protecting the interests of the taxpayer.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number 18. Maybe I'll take the lead for just a moment, and to our citizens, two days ago, we had a study session, and I made some comments on this Agenda Item that for next year, there are some contracts that we'll be discussing or voting on in just a moment. And in addition to the contracts for nonprofit organizations in our community, we have a program in Gilbert called Neighbor to Neighbor. We also have Share My Stamp, and these are programs that provide some additional funding for the nonprofits. And so I suggested of the study session, rather than, as we did last year, wait a few months and redo the contracts and add some funds, that we just do it now, with many of the contracts ending June 30th. And so we had discussion in the study session, and there were two options proposed. And so to the council tonight, I would be interested in which of the two options you might favor if we need to have any discussion. And I'm going to start on my left, Councilmember Cooper, option one or two, or do you need some discussion?
I don't know that I need much discussion. I'm favoring option two because it kind of keeps us where we've been in the past, and I, you know, my feeling all along has been that there are needs in this community that need to be met. While we're, we've made a policy to draw down the general fund, my feeling has been that we should find another way, and I think that's been the general consensus of the council, to fund those needs. And fortunately, the Neighbor to Neighbor and the Share My Stamp funds are there and available for us, and they're much appreciated. And so option three kind of keeps us most aligned with what we've done in the past, in my opinion. And especially for some of the organizations involved, it holds the funding at, you know, a similar level for them. And then there's actually a couple of other organizations that could benefit from it as well this year. And I really feel like if we're going to ask for donations from our residents, and if they contribute into the Neighbor to Neighbor Fund, that we ought to use those donations as we've told those neighbors that we would use them, and that's to invest into our nonprofits rather than to bank them or hold them for some future time that's, you know, or use that is yet to be determined. And so that's kind of my feeling for supporting option two.
Councilmember Daniels, any feedback?
Just that I understand the difference between the two as being perhaps one where as we continue to draw down on the general fund, going with option number one would allow us to use those dollars maybe to make up the difference in a future year. And I can respect the opinion of Councilmember Cooper where people have donated and he'd like to see us contribute those dollars to those nonprofits as soon as possible. But I am concerned about future years, hoping that our, the ability to maintain a revenue stream increases, and we have every indication based on Tuesday's study session that we will be able to increase those Neighbor to Neighbor funds and the Share My Stamp funds. But in the event that we're not, I would like us to maybe take a more conservative approach. So at this time, Mayor, I apologize that that probably sounded a little wishy-washy. I'm happy to go with either option at the pleasure of the council, but I do think we need to not be shortsighted about the dollars that we are raising and make sure that we are making an effort to be thoughtful. are making an effort to be thoughtful in future years as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor, feedback on Option One or Two?
Mayor, I'd support both. However things go, I think Option Two is a little higher, and I feel comfortable with what the assumptions it's based on, so I could definitely support that one.
Vice Mayor Cook, you had to leave when you had this discussion. Do you want to pass on this one and get some more comments?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, Councilmember Ray?
I generally share the same thoughts as Councilmember Daniels on this. If we did Option One, we would actually be at the same place we were last year, so it would keep the consistency there. The Neighbor to Neighbor, the Share My Stamp has been quite successful, and I expect it to continue to grow significantly. But my concern is if we have another drawdown next year, which we will, and it'll be a significant drawdown, if we don't have some funds in the Neighbor to Neighbor and in the Share My Stamp, there's going to be a major shortfall next year unless more general fund money is used. And so I could go either way, but I would prefer Item One. And I would be interested, and I don't know if this is the right time, Mayor, but I'd love to ask Jessica what her recommendation is on the two. We haven't heard much from staff as to where they stand. And the other concern that I do have is we just got back this, the needs assessment, and I'm hesitant to spend the vast majority of the money that we have when we haven't quite digested the needs assessment and asked for public input on the needs assessment and asked some of the different charities where they think it should go.
Sure, thank you. That's a fair question. And Jessica, why don't, and then we'll do Jessica, and then to Councilmember Peterson. Do you have some input on Option One and Two?
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jessica Fiero. I'm the neighborhood and outreach services supervisor. Staff is pleased to follow council direction. We are happy that we are able to be able to offer these contracts to provide much-needed services in the community.
Thank you. Did that help? No, that was a very good answer. I say that in the spirit of a thank you. Let's go, Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, I agree with the thoughts of Councilman Taylor and Councilwoman Daniels and Councilman Ray, that I think a conservative approach is wise on this. Option One, I think, is a better approach, mainly, and it's been mentioned, but the rate at which the dollars, the tax dollars, drop off according to our plan accelerates exponentially, so, literally exponentially. So it's going to drop off very quickly. And I just want to make sure, in the interest of stability, that we all shared that interest. As one of the things we ask staff to do is make sure we were as stable between one year and the next as possible, that we look ahead for those years that we're still not totally sure we're going to make those, that work out. So I do think that'd be the best approach, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, Vice Mayor Cook, maybe I'll go. And I, in reading the human needs assessment, it's a great document. We'll get to it, so I won't make further comments now. But I think the needs are there, and therefore Option Two would be one that I would probably lean towards. But Councilmember Cooper, I can see that this feedback is probably headed towards Option One, which I can support too. But with that, Vice Mayor Cook, any different comments?
Well, we all agree that the Neighbor to Neighbor stamp money was going to be used for nonprofits. And when you look at the Option Two and what we're going to, you know, fund, we're looking at the Catholic charities for My Sister's Place for Domestic Violence Shelter. Now, that to me, I mean, why would we not want to help, you know, for domestic violence? I mean, for us tonight, to deny that, to me, would be, in my mind, not right. And then the other one here is, you know, $9,000 for the Salvation Army. What a wonderful organization that is. So Option Two, to me, seems to be where we should go. And I know when we get to the needs assessment, which to me, I agree with you, Mayor, is a wonderful document. It's been a document that I've been looking for, having completed two years ago. And I think there will be a lot more changes coming this year about it. But I'm in favor of using, you know, the $54,000, you know, for this.
Now, this is not normal practice to have dialogue like this, but I needed some feedback. And what I just heard with my opinion of Option Two is that we have three that would favor Option Two, two that would favor Option One, two council members that could go with either one. And so this is not, this is just, this is, I'm saying this so we don't get confused and have a vote that puts us in a corner where we can't twist it back around. But to Councilmember Daniels, Councilmember Ray, could you go with Option Two?
You're looking at me, so I think...
Yeah, I'm going to go like this and then like this.
Yeah, I could go with Option Two, Mayor, but I would like us to continue to look for other ways. Share My Stamp was a great suggestion, I think, brought to us by staff, and I'd like to see us continue to look for opportunities like that. We all recognize it drops off, and no one's disputing, Vice Mayor Cook, the merits of any of these organizations. They all do great work, and we're grateful for the efforts that they make. So yes, I can support Option Two.
Councilmember Ray, could you support Option Two?
I would prefer Option One. I agree with what the Vice Mayor said. With that being said, there are lots of great organizations who we aren't giving money to, who aren't part of this, who are probably deserving of some of the monies as well. My concern is the long term, meaning 12 months from now, when this drops off another 70,000 or 80,000, how are we going to make up that difference? And so I would rather just keep it the same, with the intent of next year keeping it the same again with the excess funds. And so I would prefer Item Number One. All right. And I...
Mayor, just a question. I just, a couple of thoughts on some of the points that have been brought up. You know, the way I look at it, if you don't spend it now and you bank it for next year, and then the drop-off is that much more than next year, you're really kicking the can a little bit down the road. You really haven't solved the major hole that our policy has created. And I would encourage this council or any future council to reconsider that policy, to be honest. That's really where my mind is at on this. But as long as this policy is in place, especially as we get this needs assessment and we go through it, it's probably going to open up the conversation in a way we haven't had, because we haven't had this kind of information before. And then we can, we'll have to either revise our strategy or our policy, or we'll need to come up with an entire new alternative source of funding. And while I appreciate Neighbor to Neighbor and Share My Stamp, it's unlikely that they're going to ever get to the point where they completely replace it. And so all I'm saying is, I feel like if we don't fund at that level, we're really just pushing it down. We're going to have this conversation again, and we need to have this overall strategic conversation once the needs assessment is digested anyway. So my, again, my suggestion is that we just move forward on Option Two tonight, and then look forward over the next few months to work on the longer-term strategy.
Thank you. Will, we're just about to wrap this up. I think we can move forward with these comments. One statement I'll make, and then, well, Councilmember Peterson, I'll let you go first.
Just to respond to Councilman Cooper's comment, I don't view it as kicking the can down the road. As we buy ourselves time, we buy ourselves time to come up with new ideas. So the first year, we had Neighbor to Neighbor. We breathed a little life into that, but it wasn't great. And then the next year, we came up with Save My Stamp, or Share My Stamp. I'm mixing names. Share My Stamp. So that took another year later. And in a year, we may come up with some other things. And so as we make sure we've got some staying power with the funds we have, that gives us time to make up. So I don't think we're kicking the can down the road. I think we're just being careful with what we have and giving us time to come up with those other dollar amounts. I think that's a wise approach.
This comment I'll make that, Councilmember Ray, the citizens had given feedback, and so for a number of years, it was about $300,000 that had been allocated. And so that's Option Two, and that's where we'd wanted to be. Last year, because we didn't have a large surplus in Neighbor to Neighbor, we felt a little bit better about only using a few of the funds. So that's one reason why I can go either way, but I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor?
I think I heard Councilmember Cooper first.
Oh, wow. I think so, too, just barely.
Or do we need to get an instant replay on that?
No, we don't. There's always another vote that could happen. I move that we approve Option Two as it's been presented, and the contracts associated with Option Two at the levels that are provided to us in the revised agenda. Is that sufficient direction?
Second.
Correct. With that motion second, please vote. That is approved with a five to vote. Thank you. Agenda Item?
Mayor, we have one more.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. And Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. So this item here is, let me just get my notes here. To approve the budget limit, I mean, the amount of $37 million and change for the St. Xavier University Project Downtown. Certainly, this is a wonderful highlight in our community in the downtown, and I certainly support where this is headed here. I just wanted to just make a comment to just make sure that we're continuing to look at the costs and make sure that we're reasonable. Staff did a great job in answering a lot of questions that I had. And I did look at a lot of the ratios in terms of how much we're spending on some design, architecture, and, you know, the building costs, the square footage. And if you look at some of the benchmarks that were shared, this is really on the high end of a lot of those. It's still within some range, depending on which benchmarks you look at. There's other private sector projects similar to this that are much lesser in terms of dollars per square foot. So I just want to make sure that this is a good, positive plan. And I think there's been a lot of, a lot of good planning in here. I did learn that this is actually down from about $8 million from one of the original early drafts. So I appreciate the really hard work that the team has done to trim this down more and more, but just don't want to see this come back and change order after change order and, you know, ask for more things. So I'm happy to approve this tonight, Mayor, but would just like to continue to make sure that this is a good, wise investment. There's a lot at risk for our taxpayers here, and continue to look for the success of this project.
County Manager Banjer, could you, we have a resource that's now on site that is monitoring and looking at all the expenses, and I don't know if you wanted to comment on that. And then for the citizens, there have been some emails that have come wanting clarification when the town or when they've read that the St. Xavier is paying for this, but not immediately. And can you just maybe give some more feedback on that for the citizens to understand?
Sure, Mayor. The town, members of the council, the town has hired an individual who works on behalf of us and St. Xavier to review all the costs and the scope of this project, and has been a great asset and resource to us in working with the architects and the contractors to reduce quite a bit of cost from this project, from the original design and project budget. It is a guaranteed maximum price that you are approving tonight, so we should not see any change orders on this project. As a result, it would only come from a result of a change in scope voluntarily. If St. Xavier should want to add something, they would also have to pay for that cost immediately, not rolled into the bond issuance for the project, but pay that at that point in time. We do carry a contingency for unforeseen conditions, which we don't anticipate any, but we do have some budgeted dollars within that project budget to handle any of that. Going forward, St. Xavier will, per the terms of our agreement, be, we will be recouping all of our costs associated with this project over the term of the agreement with them as they bring their programs to our community and ramp up their enrollment.
Thank you. And then, Councilmember Taylor and County Manager Banjer, thank you for that additional comment. So I will now entertain a motion.
Mayor, I would like to motion or move that we approve Agenda Item Twenty-eight.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion second, please vote. That's approved with a seven of votes. Thank you. We move to the public hearing. And Vice Mayor Cook, let me just ask, do we have some requests to speak on 37 through 41?
We'd like to have a presentation with Agenda Item Thirty-nine from the council, and then that's it?
So for, and we don't have anyone who wishes to speak?
No, Agenda Item Forty-two, and that's an administrative.
So as the agenda says, Items Thirty-seven through Forty-one will be heard at one public hearing, at which time anyone wishing to comment on public hearing items may do so. And since we did not have anyone wishing to speak, I'll just open the public hearing on Agenda Items Thirty-seven, Thirty-eight... Forty and Forty-one. Thank you. And I will close the public hearing. And let me just confirm, did any of you wish to speak on those four items?
And I may have not heard this, but Thirty-nine A, was that included in your...
Will, we're going to poll Thirty-nine separately.
Thirty-nine A, separate item than Thirty-nine. There's an Agenda Item Thirty-nine A, not Thirty-nine A and B, but Thirty-nine A.
To Vice Mayor Cook, when...
Property acquisition.
When we mentioned Thirty-nine, I assume you mentioned, you meant both A and B?
Just A. No, just Thirty-nine.
Mayor, yeah. There's Thirty-nine on page 10 of my agenda.
Oh, okay.
And then on the next page, there's actually Thirty-nine A.
I now understand. And so what you meant was Thirty-nine?
Thirty-nine, not Thirty-nine A.
So did you have anything on Thirty-nine A, or should I open the public hearing on that, too? Okay, thank you. That's teamwork. Thirty-nine A is also opened. On those five, any discussion before I close the public hearing? I close the public hearing on Thirty-seven, Thirty-eight, Thirty-nine A, and Forty and Forty-one, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Items Thirty-seven, Thirty-eight, Thirty-nine A, Forty, and Forty-one.
Second.
With that motion second, please vote. That's approved with a seven of votes. Thank you. I now open the public hearing on Agenda Item Thirty-nine, and I understand that we have a staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This project, Lions Gate, is a two-part project. It is a general plan amendment to change 19 acres from residential 14 to 25 to eight to 14. That's lowering the density. Therefore, the rezoning is, will also be the same, from multifamily medium to single-family attached. It's going from a rental property to a owner-owned townhome type of property. The original density on this property had 340 units. It is being reduced to 189. There are a couple of deviations that were reviewed in study session, and since then, there have been a couple of modifications. The project is located right here at the corner of the property of the Lions Gate Master Plan, Williams Field Road. This is the view of the property. The red indicates where there is a request for a deviation. The deviation is, the minimum lot size is 2,000 square feet. The applicant would like to reduce the lot size of the lots between the end units. The end units are two-story. Everything between is three-story. The purpose of the deviation for a smaller lot size is to allow a larger lot size on the outer two portions of the building so that it becomes a little more square footage for the two-story. For instance, with this seven-plex, you see the two end units are a little larger. The smaller lots are 1795. On an average, they are over 2,000 square feet per lot. The red also indicates where the applicant originally requested a lot coverage of 60%, where SFD is at 55%. With a redesign, the applicant is now asking for the deviation of the smaller lot size and the deviation for 60% instead of 55% on 31 lots, I'm sorry, 40 lots versus the 131 lots. They were able to redesign this portion of the site because of the open space here, where they were able to make the lots big enough to meet minimum lot size. Therefore, the lot coverage also meets standards. On the other side, with the private drives going across this way, they were not able to scrunch it without giving up open space in optimum areas to buffer adjacent properties. Because they have modified the lot size in this area, it does reduce the open space by .6 acres, or 27% open space in the project instead of 31. The required open space for this type of project is... this type of project is eighteen, so they have more than maximized open space for the property. So in summary, there are three deviations with this current request, as you see it here, to permit sixty percent lot coverage and a minimum lot size on the middle units to seventeen ninety-five for forty lots, and the result of a twenty-seven percent open space. Those are the three deviations.
Linda, does the applicant wish to speak or just available to answer questions?
Mayor and council, he is here and does have a slide presentation available if there are specific questions that he can help answer.
Thank you. To the council, I know this has been something that many of us have been researching, asking more questions. There have been emails. Would we like to have some dialogue, or would you like to have the applicant have a chance to take a couple minutes and show a slideshow? A slideshow? Okay. We have a request to have the applicant come forward, please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Greg Davis. I am with IPlan Consulting. We address out of Chandler, and here on behalf of William Line Homes, who is the owner and developer of the entire Lionsgate Master Plan. I'll keep the presentation pretty short, because I know I've bombarded you with emails, and I'm sure you've read every word, so hopefully you won't need a long presentation. I do want to mention, though, that we do have two requests. The first request is obviously the land use change of the general plan. We haven't heard that's been an issue from the neighbors' staff or Planning Commission, but we are prepared to talk about that if you have any questions about it. Linda identified the overall master plan for the project. William Line Homes was the original developer and the original planner for the project, which dates back all the way to two thousand and two and the first F-P-A-D approval in two thousand and five. I mention that because I want to make sure that the council understands that this last phase is just as important as the first phase to them. It was intended originally for an apartment project for several reasons that didn't make sense. The neighbors were opposed to that, and William Lines has basically, from the ground up, designed a new product to fit here that is complementary to the existing homes, but is also different. This map kind of shows each different color is a different product type. So it's one of the first projects that came into Gilbert, into the Gateway Character area, that really integrated different types of lifestyles, and that's what this last phase is. It actually introduced a new product to this project, which we think benefits not only Lionsgate, but the overall community. I will quickly go over the two deviations that we're asking for. Linda covered the change to them, but the original request, which included the one hundred and thirty-one lots, was basically about seventy percent of the project. When we approached the Planning Commission with it and gave our presentation, there was support for why we were asking for the deviations, but I think the lack of support for the scope or the breadth of what we're requesting was. They felt that seventy percent, which is that image, was a little too much for some of the commissioners to get comfortable with. And ultimately, that turned out to be a good thing, because it allowed us to take the time to bring in our engineer and really look closer at our landscaping design, and we found a lot of inefficient or underutilized areas that we could actually add to the lots, so we could come back to you with the proposal of only forty lots, but still be offering the benefits of the two P-A-D deviations, which I will touch on right now. The first is the lot coverage deviation. The SFA zoning district requires two thousand square feet. Our minimum lots are one thousand seven hundred and ninety-five, so it's about a ten percent decrease. Again, it's only for the forty lots now versus one hundred and thirty-one. But the reason we are doing that is that we want to integrate a two-story element to these buildings. Even though it was designed for an apartment project originally, we don't want it to look and feel that way now. It's adjacent to single-family residential. It's right along Williams Field Road, so we really want to take this site and bring in something that better transitions from the intensity of the Gateway Area to the east and the lower densities to the west. And the ability to basically make all those internal lots two or three feet narrower and add that to those in-lots allows us to come in here with that two-story living area. If you think about it, the first floor is almost all garage. Each of these has a two-car detached garage. So when we show a two-story building, it's almost like a one-story living environment, and that's pretty hard to find in this type of density, and it's really a market we think has a lot of vitality to it, and we want to be able to offer that. And it benefits the project by being a little less intensive and massive-looking. This slide was just simply showing the two different building types that would have... would be here. The top one is obviously the one we're proposing with the deviation. The bottom one is if we go to all the lots meeting the minimum, this... We're going to get three-story buildings in, and there's a place for that. Definitely has an urban look to it, maybe further in Cooley Station, but we just don't want to put that in this part of our project next to our existing neighbors. As Linda mentioned, even though we are asking for a deviation in the minimum lot size, our average lot size is actually over twenty-three hundred square feet. So we think that's important, because we think we're meeting the intent of the ordinance requirement by providing lots that are, when you take it on the whole, well over what the minimum requirement is. This slide is just simply to show the other benefit of the deviation. If we have to increase the lot sizes to all two thousand square feet, the only place to take that from is from our, basically, our north and south boundaries. We've met with the neighbors to the north. We actually have pedestrian connections. They're all two-story, single-family detached homes, and one of the things we're trying to provide is a better transition or buffer between our two uses, and this deviation helps us provide the ability to do that. The second request, which again applies just to the forty lots in question now, is to increase the lot coverage for those interior units. And the only reason we even looked at that is because it allowed us the opportunity to introduce a third-car tandem garage option plan to the mix. Right now, there's a total of five plans, and two of them will have this option. The reason why we think it's important is really twofold. The most important reason is because of the onsite parking issues that typically happen with densities of this size. We're providing sixty-two guest parking spaces. Only forty-seven are required by code, so we're already exceeding the minimum, but we know that sometimes in peak seasons, holiday seasons, et cetera, that's not enough. And so one of the things we're trying to do is get people to park in their garage. Now, we know that this third space may not always be used for a car, may be used for a gym or storage, et cetera, and the Planning Commission picked up on that. But the point is, is that if they didn't put it in the third spot, they put it in one of the other two spots, so we're trying to alleviate the situation, regardless if it's used for that purpose or not. The final point I want to discuss is the last change to the plan. It's not a deviation. Right now, the code is eighteen percent for open space or twenty percent for SFA. We were providing thirty-one percent. That's what our development plan, that's in your packet, shows. So it's really important that if the council believes that the proposal we're making here tonight is a benefit to the town, they include this in the approval, because it allows us to not comply with the development plan that shows the higher percentage of open space. So basically, the summary of our request is the twofold, the request of the general plan, land use amendment, as well as the rezoning with those three items. Two are the deviations for the forty units. The third one is just basically a notation that the project have a minimum of twenty-seven percent open space or four-point-four acres, because that does deviate from what we showed previously. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'm going to ask a question towards Councilmember Daniels. We had discussion in the study session about concerns of parking, and I think there were additional questions that have occurred in the last two days and representing the feedback you received in the Planning Commission. Do you have an update for the council that will help us?
Mayor, I'll just... I'd probably end up repeating what I've said in study session. Really, the deviations are not my concern. I actually think this is a better product than what we saw previously, and so I appreciate the changes that have been made. Hopefully, the feedback has been clear enough, but definitely the product has improved, in my opinion. They're meeting the parking requirements, so it's hard for me to go back to them and say, "Add more." But I would like us, as a council, in fact, I do have an Agenda Item request form that I'll pass around, but I would like us to, from a policy perspective, and not on this individual case, but from a policy perspective, really identify what the parking needs are in communities like this, particularly with its proximity. The density is obviously there. The proximity to ASU East, we have all of the Cooley Station property that this is adjacent to. I live very close to Lionsgate and have been through that neighborhood many times, and particularly in the northwest section of Lionsgate. The parking is an issue. The trash collection is an issue, and I apologize that that's somewhat anecdotal for me to even say that, but one car really does fit when you have all these cars parking on the street. And if this product turns into, over the years, more of a, not necessarily a student housing, but, you know, a young families housing, you get multiple cars. Sometimes they have a tenant that will live with them to offset costs and might be attending school. I mean, there's all kinds of different scenarios that we'll see in an area like this or in a product like this, and that increases the number of vehicles per unit. So again, I appreciate the tandem garage concept. I would love to guarantee that everyone would park in their garage. We all know that that's not the case. We recognize that you guys have done some improvements to the plan, and again, from a policy level, I would like to see us, as a council, both look at minimum street width requirements and also parking requirements in some of our higher-density zoning districts.
So as the liaison to the Planning Commission, you've seen improvements. Still some concerns, but at this point, they've met all the requirements, and your recommendation is to proceed and then have policy discussion that might improve other projects. Okay? Councilmember Cooper?
Just a question for the applicant. Those optional... Or it shows the tandem garages, the word "option" was on there, and I'm trying to understand if that... What you mean by the word "option"? Those are going to be built and installed that way. This is not a buyer's option to select whether that tandem is put in, or is it?
Mayor Lewis and Councilmember Cooper. No, the plan designed, those will be standard features, but it's... It'll only be applicable to two of the five plans. That's the point of the option.
So as we're shown on the map, those tandem garages that were drawn in there will be there. And when you use the word "option," you're really saying they can pick that unit that has a tandem or a similar unit that doesn't have a tandem. That's the option. It's not that that red box might actually be a living space or something else.
That's the intention, yeah.
Okay, so the parking, that additional...
Excuse me one minute.
Sure.
Just to clarify, that, yeah, the tandem will be there, but it's not offered on every plan.
Okay, that's fine, but as far as calculating the parking requirements and all of that, those tandem spots are part... They were counted as part of the parking, and that's why you're saying you're overparked, and therefore, those are not going to go away out of the parking calculations.
Mayor Lewis and Councilmember Cooper, that's actually not correct. The sixty-two spaces that I referenced earlier are the dedicated pull-in spaces throughout the open space. Every unit has two-car spaces, and then the additional option units with the tandem, those are not counted towards that requirement. So they are over and above that requirement.
So I would just echo Councilmember Daniels' comments, specifically on this case and then more generally on the policy discussion I think we should have down the road for these neighborhoods to be more comfortable, if nothing else.
Thank you. Any other discussion before I close the public hearing on thirty-nine? I close the public hearing on Agenda Item thirty-nine, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt the attached resolution approving GP fourteen dash zero four and move to make the findings of fact and adopt the attached ordinance approving Z fourteen dash zero six with requested deviations being namely, permit a maximum of forty lots to be a minimum of seventeen ninety-five square feet in area, permit a maximum of forty lots to be a maximum of sixty percent lot coverage, and project shall have a minimum of twenty-seven percent or four-point-four acres of open space.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion, second please vote. That's approved with a seven of all. Thank you. We move to administrative items. Vice Mayor Cook, do we have any requests for individuals to speak on administrative items?
Mayor, we do. And I do need clarification with one of the individuals that did not want to speak, but that individual didn't say they were for or against. And that would be...
Forty-two.
That was forty-two. Pennelli? Is Pennelli here? Maybe not. Then we just have one individual that would like to speak, Mayor.
Thank you. Forty-two is a presentation on our Human Services Needs Assessment. It's a thick report, and for the council to set an expectation, as I ask various questions of town leadership, let me set an expectation. And there's still some dialogue we can have, but the individuals who are going to be presenting were not available in the study session, and often a presentation is more conducive to a study session. But this is a report that we have requested and has a lot of great information that we've started to uncover. The intent tonight is to introduce us to the report, to those that prepared the report. It is not necessarily planned to have a lot of discussion tonight, and town leadership does have planned for a couple of things to occur. One, to give us time to review it, that we can have some discussions with the town manager, with others on the town staff involved, and that at the retreat, there would be some more time allowed to help us set priorities based on what we've learned and read, and then also to discuss the possibility of having the Human Resource Commission involved and getting into some more details, make recommendations. But summary is that tonight, we are here to thank the group that has prepared the information. Very comprehensive, will be very helpful to us, and that would be the game plan after. But if there is one or two comments, obviously, that will be helpful tonight, and you're close enough where I think we could have you come back in August if we needed to have you come back. But we have a request to speak, and so we'll first do the presentation, and then we'll look at the possibility of having the one person speak, and we'll go from there. So please.
Mayor and council, my name is David Broughton, and this is Dr. Lisa Zarita, and we are pleased to have the opportunity to dialogue with you today. We were inspired by the good work being done by so many in the town of Gilbert and appreciated the perspectives of people who shared in this process. As a local nonprofit, the Williams Institute was pleased to partner with the town of Gilbert, including the Office of Town Manager and the Gilbert Neighborhood and Outreach Services Division, and we commend you, as leaders, for having the foresight to take a proactive approach to examine the human services needs of the community and to take the initiative to listen to the perspectives of the people. Okay, very quickly, we have a little agenda here. We can talk about the scope of the work, research overview, human services, population. We'll talk a little bit about recommendations and partnership strategies, and if we have time, mention some of the greatest strengths that were mentioned as part of this research. So the scope of the work included what human services are currently available and accessible, accessible meaning not just proximity, but affordable, as mentioned by the participants. What gaps or areas of improvement exist, and what are the greatest needs we looked at, and that was part of the scope, and to provide recommendations and best practices to address existing and future gaps in human services, including through local and regional partnerships. Overview of outcomes. This was a targeted, scientific, and multi-method research approach with the same sample population that exceeded the amount of participants we promised to incorporate in the study in our original proposal. We spoke with all seven population groups, as well as human service providers and faith-based leaders. So at this point, I'll ask Lisa to come up and talk about more specifics.
Good evening. So who are human services for? These are just some of the folks that they are for. They include fourteen thousand residents below the federal poverty level, twenty-six thousand who are low-income, and a variety of other folks that providers in Gilbert actually address and assess, including the police department, who manages domestic violence. the police department, who manages domestic violence calls, suicide calls, et cetera. We were asked to rank order the population groups in greatest need, in order of greatest need. And these are the rankings that you, as the community, stated as being most relevant. One of the most important facets, there's a few things to note with these rankings. One, is that although each participant, we contacted every participant from these population groups to participate, they don't necessarily fit into one category. For example, there are significant overlaps. Some families in crisis were also homeless. They were also parents of youth, for example, and had a special needs individual. So one individual is not a clean fit in each of these categories. Another second piece to note is that who these people are are defined in more detail in the report. For example, what exactly does it mean to be low or moderate income? And what exactly is a definition of a homeless individual, which is actually very unique in Gilbert and not necessarily the person you might see on the street corner? The last thing to critically note is that representatives of the human service community were very, and very clear to advocate not robbing one population group of their resources in order to pay for resources for another group. So as a group, they would argue against the idea, actually, that any human service area is overfunded or providing duplicated or redundant services. So with that said, these are the population need rankings in order. Number one was the families and individuals in crisis. Number two is an emergent group that came up from the study, and those were mental health and substance abuse treatment group. Those can be co-occurring, occurring at the same time, or separate group individuals, separate individuals within that group. The third are low to moderate income individuals and families. The fourth, elderly or seniors. The fifth were homeless individuals and families. The sixth were special needs individuals. Seventh, youth. Eighth, immigrants. And nine was cultural diversity with individuals and families. And this was another emergent group that came up, and the idea was to, the community asked for cultivating an enhanced appreciation for a blend of cultures and socioeconomic backgrounds. Some of the greatest strengths that we were so happy to note in the town of Gilbert were the human service providers who provide these wonderful services for these population groups. And if you read through the report in the text boxes, starting on page 47, again and again, the strengths of the community were the providers, the main providers of these services in Gilbert. So we were so happy to hear that. With those strengths come those challenges that these providers are giving. For example, families in crisis, pressure to shorten stays before reaching a measure of stability. When a family's in crisis, you can understand that it might take some additional time to gain stability, and funding, as it is, does not allow for that time in some regard. Greatest challenges, again, for low to moderate income, safe and affordable housing, balancing basic needs, paying for basic needs with having to also pay for housing and utilities. Some of the other greatest challenges for the elderly. Transportation was very key for the elderly, especially for medical appointments and for disability-related concerns. Homeless, emergency, family housing was key, and also special needs, group home activity, as well as recreation opportunities located within the town of Gilbert. For youth, mental health and substance abuse treatment services were very key. And also fee assistance for youth and some other pieces with that. The immigrant population, very key for them, was employment. And that is, that was one of the most pressing pieces for them. There were other population groups that emerged, although not with as much forcefulness. Those included respite care for people such as those caring for a sick or elderly parent or spouse, grandparents raising children, and respite care for that group. Veterans came up, single parents came up, victims of human trafficking, and grandparents who raise grandchildren, foster care, and also some teen pregnancy and motherhood challenges. There were many gaps, and I appreciate that you, as town representatives, have to do your best to address all of these, the enormity of these gaps. We tried to identify the main key gaps that were specific across all population groups. And the first one was centralized and personalized resource information referral. These are what all these groups had asked for. And these included, you know, people asked for a community center, and we can appreciate that that's not necessarily possible to erect a community center. However, if that was not possible, what they asked for is to have a town advocate who can provide assistance with updated services, working phone numbers, and to try to strengthen those existing collaborations that were in place. The second key theme across population groups was safe and affordable housing. And this looked, this came across in different avenues. For example, some of the special needs groups said that they were unable to open small-group homes in neighborhoods because people were afraid of them. And these were people that perhaps just maybe were nonverbal and not able to speak, and they needed a place to live, but they were, they needed, they wanted to make sure that they knew that they were adding to the community should their housing be erected in those sites. One of the other key pieces is for any of this information on centralized information referral is that the information gets disseminated in many different avenues, many different ways across Gilbert, even in libraries, bus stops, grocery stores, and utilize a lot of different ways to provide for these key gaps in services that came up. Transportation was another key gap that came. And we know that the town of Gilbert is providing a master plan, and whatever that can be done to expedite that, as far as expediting resources for bus routes and public transportation, elderly we mentioned with the doctor's appointments, et cetera. Basic needs were key, specifically water bills, rent, water, food. Gilbert CAP, there's a lot of good resources being provided. Those are a huge need, again, that is critical. And the fifth one was accessible healthcare to meet needs. And this didn't, not only included accessibility, but also navigating the system. And we gave some recommendations about how to navigate through that, that are cost-effective, and to build upon some of the great work that's being done by Mercy Gilbert Medical Center with the parish nursing program and the faith health ministry. A lot of good things to build upon that are already being conducted in the community. When we look at recommendations, aside from focusing on those five main gaps, and again, in the interest of time, I'm not going to go over the 18 recommendations, as well as the partnership recommendations. But if you, we were to just tailor down those recommendations, aside from focusing on the five main gaps that were common to all groups, that these would be some of the other key ones. And the first one would be to revisit the five-year plan for elimination of general fund contributions, to not eliminate funds, but to appropriate the funds to nonprofits, to contract with them so that human service needs can be met that the town does not have the capacity to meet internally. And there are certainly human service needs that cannot be met by volunteers, and there are certainly impacts, and we quoted this in the report, in the MAG report, that you saw the impact of what would happen to centers like the Boys and Girls Club and a number of providers should that funding decrease. The second recommendation is to take an active role in working with the community to recognize the critical need for high-quality mental health and substance abuse treatment. We had several quotes, for example, that stated that there's a 56 percent increase for youth in mental health, suicide calls in the hospital on weekends, and that this need is a big one that came out with your community. The next one is to develop awareness, to make needs known to the greater community, to encourage volunteerism and reduce fillings of social stigma. And there's a lot of really great partnerships, neighbors helping neighbors that are going on, and building upon those volunteer opportunities is key. Encourage bringing more jobs and higher wages to Gilbert. I know you, there's been some discussion of that as well, and we gave some suggestions about that in there. And we talked about expediting current partnerships and volunteer opportunities, and then establishing cultural diversity education and support services to enhance really just a broad range of diversity interests. And this includes the socioeconomic interests as well. We had several, spoke with several folks, for example, who said, you know, "I used to make $75,000 a year. I was making $39 to $40 an hour, and now I'm having difficulty finding a job for $10 an hour." These are some of the recommendations. We certainly, in the interest of time, have some, if you should ask the question, some suggestions about how to navigate through the report. We understand it is a thick document, so in the interest of time, if you have that question, we are happy to respond to that. But in closing, David?
Yeah. Wanted to end on a, just a really important note, in that there are some great strengths in Gilbert that are on here. I don't have to list them all, and you probably know most of them anyway. Family-oriented, great schools, neighbors helping neighbors, which is something that we've heard about already tonight. These are great, great base to build on, to meet the needs of the community, and to provide a good quality of life for all. And the excellence in the community that you propose, and that is part of the vision and mission of the city of Glendale. So as president of the Williams Institute, I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide this service of this needs assessment. We did, I think, a huge job, probably took on, ended up taking a lot more than had been within the scope as we tried to fulfill completely and adequately the scope of the assessment. So with that being said, we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you. To the council, we did have one person wish to speak. Would this be the appropriate time, and then we'll have some dialogue? Thank you. Vice Mayor Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. We'd like to invite Paul Hartvist to the podium.
And Paul, if you could state your name for the record, if you're a Gilbert resident, and you'll be given two minutes to speak.
Thank you. I'm Paul Hartquist. Hartquist, just like your heart, okay? And I'm a resident of Gilbert for about 22 years now. I just wanted to thank the council particularly for commissioning this study. It's been greatly needed, excuse the pun, for quite some time now. And I, as a, I like to address it with, from two perspectives. I am a user of the information provided by this study, and I am also a provider of some of the services. I shouldn't say "I am." The volunteers are provider of the services. And I'd like to thank the Williams Institute for doing a great job. I read the report. I read the whole report. Usually, it's my daughters that keep me up all night, but I read, I didn't get any sleep that night that I read the report. Pretty long, but that is good because it's so comprehensive, and it really addresses the real problem that Gilbert Cares has been having over the last 20 years of operation. And the people who have the need are shy and proud, and they don't usually identify that they have a need. So this, I hope, will bring it out. And in closing, I'd like to say, in 20 years of operation, Gilbert Cares has not used one single penny of Town of Gilbert's funds. We go to a more generous source, I'm sorry for that, but the people of Gilbert, it used to be up there, the people of Gilbert and the volunteers and the companies and the corporations and the Chamber of Commerce and, okay. Let me use the last couple of seconds of the buzzing in your ear to announce the upcoming of Gilbert Cares' next project on Make a Difference Day, October 24th, the fourth Friday, the fourth Saturday of October. And we never have a problem getting volunteers, so any activity that the town has going on that very same day, it is a national day of volunteering. So there are lots of volunteers going around, so I ask for your support in identifying the people who are in the need and also encouraging support from companies and volunteers.
Thank you. And I, Councilmember Peterson, that October 24th date, it's on our calendar, isn't it?
We're planning on it, and we're happy to work with you and however we can to help serve the citizens that, in Gilbert, who need our help. And we appreciate you helping us connect to those needs as well. So thank you for your great work in the community.
Thank you. Now, to the council, we will have the retreat, as I said, but if there was a quick comment or two that you wanted to make before we end this part, and Councilmember Daniels?
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to thank the Williams Institute for all of the work that you've done. I know Jessica Fero from town staff, as well as others from the town that have worked so hard to make this come to pass. And again, we've probably echoed the sentiments of many when we say that this is well-needed, and the timing is right. And what I like most about this document is the ability that we have Mayor now to be proactive when it comes to the needs in the community, that we've identified them. And we also need to recognize that the needs in the community are going to be very fluid, and so we need to stay abreast of the things that our citizens are in most need of, and as neighbors and as leaders and in whatever capacity we serve in this community, it's important to just keep an eye open for maybe a trend that might be coming. And so, again, thanks for all the work that's been done. I look forward to really getting into this document and making sure we understand how we can move forward in a positive direction.
I echo that. My expectations were far exceeded on the amount of information, very hopeful, very specific. Anything else? You're hearing a thank you from seven of us, so we'll continue the discussion. To the council, I will jump to 46, and then we'll come back to 45. We have a policy discussion, and the individual to lead that policy discussion will be Rod, and if you could give us the overview and what the council needs to decide.
Members of the council, Rod Buchanan again. While Melanie gets the short PowerPoint presentation loaded up, basically, this item is to try to streamline the current process that we have for naming parks and recreation facilities. Today, town council has sole authority and responsibility of naming, but you can designate it to an advisory board. And so it's the intent of this policy to identify the Parks, Recreation, and Library Services Advisory Board as a designated board and establish the guidelines and parameters to be used by the board for naming and renaming Gilbert Parks and Recreation Facilities. It's, the Parks Board had expressed an interest to have a process in place that was consistent, and it would allow for a number of different naming and renaming of different facilities and areas within the parks. And so, in order to establish this consistent procedure for naming, and also the placement of memorials. Now, the memorial portion of the policy is bringing back, being brought back to council and incorporated into the naming policy because the authority of the past policy rests with a board that no longer exists. So we wanted to clean that up at the same time. So the objectives are very simple. We want to be able to ensure that parks and recreation facilities are easily identified and located. We want to ensure that the names of parks and recreation facilities are consistent with the values and character of the area or the neighborhood served, encourage public participation in the naming of the parks and recreation facilities, and then encourage dedication of lands, facilities, and donations by individuals, and allow for markers to be placed in parks and on recreation facilities honoring or memorializing individuals or organizations, typically within Gilbert.
Thank you. We did- We did have one citizen that wished to speak, and why don't we cover that, and then we'll come back and have some discussion. Rod, you may have some questions, so Vice Mayor Cook?
Mayor, we'd like to welcome Mike Evans to the podium.
And Mike, as you did so well before, if you can, for the record, state name, Gilbert resident, and two minutes, please.
Mike Evans, Gilbert resident. I'm speaking on behalf of Desert Rivers Audubon Society, Board of Directors. We had some concerns about the policy that was being brought forth and the ability to rename entities in the town without the people that regularly use those facilities to be given advanced warning that there was an interest in renaming things. And so I spoke to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and they gratefully accepted the suggestions that I had, and then with the great discussion that you have with those board members, they enhanced the proposal from what was originally brought to them by staff. And so we're here to say that we are in support of it. We think that the important parts are the procedures, which obviously we keep procedures out of policies when you're running multimillion-dollar corporations like a town, but the proof of the pudding is the way that the things get done on the inside. And so we're supporting the policy at this time. But we do continue to have concerns to make sure that if anything does get renamed, that those organizations that regularly use it, be it a Little League, all the way on up to somebody like Desert Rivers, is given plenty of adequate notice that the change may be coming their way. So I encourage you to support the proposal that's been brought forth to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rod, as Little League was mentioned, some time ago, the council did receive emails about, on a sad note, one of the Little League players and the league wanting to respond. And does this help that process if the league made that request to the town? Can you remind us of those details and what that would mean based on this policy?
Yes. That request now has a method to be vetted, and it would be at the Parks Board level initially, and then brought to council. Council has the ultimate authority to accept a recommendation from the Parks Board or not, and so, but at least it gets a starting point and a process in place in order to start it. And if I could comment briefly on Mike Evans' comment, any renaming will, the process that we did get approved by the Parks Board does include notifying all of the current user groups before that process would conclude.
And the, back to the Little League, the request, I don't know if it was a park or memorial, but this process now allows that where before it did not. Is that correct?
Well, yes. It has a, we didn't have a formalized process that was current, so now it is current, and now we'll reach out to them and get that process started.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments?
Just one. I think I just want to clarify, Rod, that there are certain memorials that have been placed in the Town of Gilbert thus far, and we hope after our conversation on Tuesday that we have an opportunity to increase that number. The Town of Gilbert is now considering the, a replica of the Vietnam Wall, and that obviously would be a substantial investment by volunteers and such. I think my question, I think I'm asking this the proper way. There are already memorials in the town that the town has, in some ways, accepted the responsibility to maintain. There is a fund established, the Public Safety Memorial is one of them, and also the 9/11 Memorial is also one. But really, the town at some point does take ownership, if you will, of that type of thing. And I'm not saying that this is the model that would be carried forward, but does the town have the option within this policy? I think they do based on the language, but there may be a time when the town wants to, because it becomes so important to the community as a whole, take ownership, if you will, of the maintenance and the continued landscape requirements or whatever it might be of some type of memorial. Is that included in this policy? Again, under number five, I thought that it does, but I want to clarify with you. It's number five under the criteria.
Yes. On a larger-scale project, typically the smaller, the smaller family memorials, they pay a fee that typically will cover maintenance, installation, and ongoing maintenance for a number of years, with no guarantee that it will continue it after that. On a larger project, that would fall under different circumstances, and anything is doable by contract by council.
Mayor, I think the 9/11 memorial is a perfect example of how that's really become an integral part of the town, our Public Safety Memorial. We would never, as a council or a community, want to see anything happen to those memorials. We wouldn't want them to fall into disrepair. And we've never really set a policy that says how many years' worth of maintenance would be included in such a fund that would be dedicated to the town. So I just want us to be aware that there may be times when the town does start picking up the tab, if you will, for some of the maintenance, but if it's become an integral part of the town, it sounds like we have the leeway to be able to do that.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Vice Mayor Cook?
Rod, just a quick question. When we participate in public-private partnerships of facilities or parks, and the naming of that happens, can you explain maybe how that process might change or may not change?
Are you speaking of a park? Vice Mayor Cook?
Again, I'm just thinking of public-private partnerships that we may have.
Those typically public, Mayor Lewis, Vice Mayor Cook. Most of the time, public-private partnerships are very unique, and there is no set boilerplate. It depends on the number of contributions that are coming for the project, and naming rights is usually a discussion point and a deal point of most public-private partnerships, primarily if there's a lot of private dollars that go into a project. So the answer is, it's not, it's not boilerplate. It is more on a case-by-case basis.
Did you want to add to that?
Yes. And so, just to be clear, this is not the sponsorship or advertising policy that we're bringing forward at another time. That's a little bit different discussion, so I still think I was clear on what Vice Mayor Cook was asking, but I just wanted to make that little point.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Rod for bringing this up. Glad to see that we can move on, move on this. I attended some of the Parks Board's meetings where this came up, and really great feedback, good dialogue. It was a really positive discussion. Former Councilmember Evans brought some great, a great suggestion, appreciated that. Former Councilmember Presnick was there to add, you know, a good perspective from their time, and appreciated that. Good work from Rod and his team, so I'm supportive and happy to move this item tonight as appropriate.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to move item 46, the policy, to Parks and Rec, excuse me, item 46, Parks and Rec naming policy and renaming and memorial policy, as noted and presented in the packet.
Second. With that motion seconded, please vote. That's approved. Thank you. We return to Agenda 45, Boards Commission Reports. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, just on the Human Relations Commission, we had a great presentation tonight on the needs assessment. I'll just mention for the benefit of the council that they had seen a little bit of the story in terms of how it came together. That was very helpful. We don't have a July meeting, but the next time they meet in August, they'll be able to take a look at this and start to formulate feedback and input that perhaps we can see at the retreat or as we start to have dialogue on that. That's when they'll start to work on that. So I just wanted to mention that for the benefit of the council here.
Thank you. Future meetings on 47, as a reminder, there is an annual worship service that focuses on public safety, recognizing those in the military. It's a patriotic worship service at the Sunrise Assembly of God, and many of us will be attending on Sunday morning at 9:30. And our July 4th activities, our future meetings, the already-mentioned Sunday night, a community patriotic music program, and then the July 4th activities. So outside of that, other future meetings will be probably in our backyards, barbecuing things like that. Agenda item 48, now to the town manager there, I'm going to slip in something. We have a new town engineer. I sat next to him at a meeting. I don't know if you want to introduce him, if you want him to come to the podium, if you want Ken to introduce him, but in addition to anything you had, if you could maybe slip in the town engineer so the town council gets to meet him?
Thank you, Mayor. I intended to do that. We do have a new town engineer. If I could have our Public Works Director, Ken Morgan, and our new town engineer, Greg Smith, come to the mic to introduce himself. I will say, I used to go round and round with an attorney back in St. Louis by the name of Greg Smith. We just, we didn't see eye to eye on a lot, but I know that my relationship with this Greg Smith is going to be much different, and we look forward to him joining our team. So Ken, take it from there. And Ken, at the end, would you also update the council on our sewer main break?
Sure. Thank you. Mayor Lewis and council, I am excited to present a new member of our team, Greg Smith, our new town engineer.
Thank you, Ken. Mr. Mayor, members of council, appreciate the opportunity to serve. It's an exciting community that we have here, and I'm looking forward to being able to be a valued member of the team. I look forward to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Greg. Welcome. Please?
The other item, mayor and council, as well as members present, as you well know, the town was impacted on May 14th regarding a sewer main break that occurred in Greenfield Road in an area adjacent to our South Area Service Center. And the latest update is that we plan to have the road open and all of the work associated with the project completed by Wednesday. We had planned on having it open a little sooner, but we are performing or having additional service retreatment done for the roadway so that we can have it open effectively for traffic.
Thank you, Ken. Please?
Thank you, Mayor. That's it.
No mention of teams that did a no-hitter this week? I mean, is that, are you sure that's it? Okay, let's move on. Agenda item 49, report from Town Council members. Fifty, down to two. Council and town leadership will receive more information about this. Gilbert is one of 10 communities that are part of the Arizona Mayor, Mayor's Education Roundtable. And this week, there was a press conference held in Phoenix to provide feedback on the economic impact of one of our Gilbert citizens that would not receive a diploma in high school. And you'll find the information very interesting, and then they did it for the other nine cities and also the impact to the state of Arizona. The last item that I bring up today is there were seven members of the Gilbert team that had a chance to visit the Topgolf facility at our Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian Council, and they were the hosts today. The reason why this is relevant to Gilbert is Topgolf is being built in Gilbert. The estimated completion date is around December, and it is quite the facility. I will just keep it brief by saying that for Gilbert, this will be a great asset, wonderful event. I think Kyle won the longest shot, and so we look forward to having you use the facility in Gilbert, Kyle. But Vice Mayor Cook, you were there. Anything else you wanted to add to that?
Well, I was amazed how many folks that worked there were Gilbert residents. And, you know, obviously, we were trying to recruit them to be part of our Topgolf team here when they opened.
Thank you. Thank you to all who participated, all who helped prepare for the agenda. On that note, meeting adjourned.